My dear.
Six o'clock.
There you go.
Welcome.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, everybody. This is a joint workshop between the Board of Selectment in New Hampshire and the Advisory Budget Committee. I am going to turn it over to Mr. Tom Burdock, the chairman of the Advisory Budget Committee.
Were you going to start with the COVID equalization options before we turn that over for budget? Or are you going to do that afterward?
We can do that.
Okay.
Just go ahead.
I don't have anything on.
I don't know what the board's pleasure was after your discussion last night.
Scott, do you have something?
Yeah, let's do it now and get it out of the way. It shouldn't be that long.
Yeah, okay, right here.
I put together amateurish spreadsheet just so I could keep my mind clear on what was going on. But what I have listed here are the total full-time people we had. And I used the period that we actually paid the first responders, and that was May 4th through June 30th. That was the 8.29 weeks that we used for the first responders stipends. I pulled payroll for all the employees we had that worked that period. Broken out by full-time folks, part-time folks, and those part-time folks would actually be considered full-time under the first responder guidelines. And Steve had wanted those four people that he had, part-timers, considered as full-timers. I listed those employees who freely said that they didn't work in a building, a facility, didn't do site visits, didn't have face-to-face time. They basically just went straight home with laptops and worked from home. And just for good measure, I added the librarians and the library staff at the bottom. Wasn't sure if the board was planning on considering them or not. There's no retirement associated with these funds, so it's... The 248571 was the amount for full-time folks. And the 124286 was the amount for part-time. And FICA and MEDI had 7.65 on top of that. And the FICA and MEDI is reflected in it. And listed a couple of totals, like the 14 full-timers or 18 if you included the part-timers that could qualify as full-timers. And the folks highlighted in red are folks that worked during that time period but that are no longer with us. No longer employed. As far as I know, they're still with us.
Well, my first impression, the library is separate. We don't want to consider them. They do their own thing, so...
No, I definitely disagree because those people were working during that time and they were directly...
Sorry.
Yeah, no, I thought you were going to say...
Let the library people decide if they want to do something...
Do they have funding for ARPA to do that?
No, they don't.
So the only people that would have the funding to take care of that would be us. And they were the ones who worked during the pandemic. And they were touching things and pressing back and forth to everyone. So I'll just disagree. That's fine, you can disagree.
We'll agree to disagree.
That leaves it to you. Did you hear what we said in the statement?
I'm sorry?
I know, I know. I'm going to talk more.
I love my batteries, okay?
Can you hear me when I talk here? Does that work for you? Can you hear me when I'm talking into the microphone? No? Should I talk to you here? What's best?
Certainly.
Okay.
I've had my shots. Tell me what it is.
Great. So we're discussing the library. I said that because this is coming out of ARPA funds and the libraries have access to ARPA funds. And these people were working by touching the actual books. They were cleaning, they were disinfecting, they were doing all that work.
Right.
But I feel very strongly that they're also part of the town. They also were working during the pandemic, and we should include them in the ARPA, in the funding, because they don't have any funds to pay for that.
I understand.
Would you share your thought?
My thought is, they can't have the cake and eat it too. Because the library has always said, "We're separate, we do our own thing." They can do their own thing if they want to do that, that's fine. But I don't think so. They can't take advantage of the town and then not take advantage and do their own thing when they feel like it. So I feel just separate.
Do they have a separate access to a different funding source that they don't?
I don't answer that question.
Well, I don't mean to understand. How does that work? If they're part of the town?
But Scott has a good point. They can't... You can't switch from this philosophy to this philosophy depending on where the dollar sign is. I mean, if they're going to take a position, if they're going to take a position as management, as we approach them or as they approach us, to say, "We're independent, okay? We don't... We do our thing as trustees of the library." And therefore, most of the time, we back off from that because they do their thing. Now, all of a sudden, I'm assuming, but did you say they have access to the funds? They don't have any access to the funds. So they come to us, so they come to us and say, "Okay, you know, here's what we'd like to do." The question is, as the select board, should we support them? Yes, I understand everything Scott said, and he's absolutely right. And sometimes it upsets us. Okay. Well, it's a use of a word. I can pick others. And, you know... But I think, honestly, as I think about it, we should support them. We should support them in this because the town needs to get through this. The town needs to get through this, and we need to do it in a manner that, you know, we don't have any animosity afterwards and so on. So that would be my position on it. I can't disagree with what Scott said. I just think we need to maybe go out of our way to support it. And let's get beyond it.
Could I add just a brief commentary? I talked to a number of people, both before this was presented to you and also today. And I think, I'm just going to give you my mindset as I went through this. I know there was a lot of talk about who had face-to-face contact, who didn't, who was working with people, who wasn't. As I went through the departments and thought about, and did some homework as well, I know there was some concern about the people working in the front window of the police department. But this building was closed during this period, and there shouldn't have been any public in here. I know there was a lot of discussion about transfer station. But when I actually got into things, there was a stay-off-the-wall policy and some other things that were supposed to keep everybody separated. There was some concern about people who worked at a window versus opened a door and took things and exchanged things. And after I sort of mulled this all over, it occurred to me that pretty much all of our people that were working in a building, in a facility, doing site visits or whatever, regardless of their actual position, had a level of stress...
They were at risk.
A level of exposure, and everyone was having a much more difficult time getting their job done.
Absolutely.
To my mind, it made sense if you were going to do something, was to probably choose the full-timers and classify the four part-timers that had 30 hours or better as full-timers and do them all. But that was just my personal thought, and I thought I would throw it out there after talking to the masses about this since Steve started floating it.
So with that said, how much is that? Because I'm looking at numbers here, and I'm looking at, what?
Forty-eight thousand?
Do you think this?
That would be the full-time non-first responders, the part-time non-first responders, and that would be the total, not yes, because you're not including the library, or at least not as of yet. And you would not... I'm assuming you're not going to include the people that just went straight home, worked from home on their own with laptops. That's an additional...
Yeah, I would agree in terms of the people that took laptops and went home. They shouldn't be included at all. The problem I'm having with this is the money that we've kind of... What can I say? In terms of for the financial plating tool assigned for different projects, we want to... This has taken up probably of the first payment about, what is that?
Twenty percent.
About 20%. And that's significant.
It's very significant.
I think we should do something, but...
You could decide to not pay the four people that are no longer here, and that would take out a chunk.
Yeah, but that would give you one of your chips. I don't want to do that.
I haven't gotten a bone thrown to me in, I don't know how long. It's not that I don't want to pay them, I want to pay them. It's not that I don't want to pay them, I'm just looking at how much we have to pay, how little money we have. And I'm trying to make sure that everyone that is working with us and is going to be facing things in the future has received the message, "We appreciate the work that you did, and we appreciate what you've done for the town." I think, for me, that's why it's more important that if we're going to cut somebody, it's somebody that isn't with us as opposed to somebody who's actively working with us right now.
Stuck. Totally not stuck. So in terms of those particular people you mentioned, Andy, how much is that in terms of total?
Those, if you eliminated three people, you would eliminate $8,025.
And the amount we're giving for both, how is that determined? The 300 and the 150, where did that come from?
Those were specified in the original first responder stipend program. Those were the assigned amounts to use. And as I said, they used a little bit different hourly configuration for full-time and part-time. The federal guidelines said anyone that had 30 hours or more would be considered full-time.
So go through the list. So it's all the people on top of the list, possibly without the people that are in red, correct?
Yep.
And then the four people on the next section?
Right.
And then what about the people that are below that?
The next people, the next group of four are people that went directly home. Didn't stay in the office, had no contact with folks. And then below that is the library.
Okay, so in that third section, the people that went home, the four, and what is it? Menelik, Nancy, Jeans, and Reddall, are we agreed we're not going to do anything for them?
Those ones are the ones that went home.
Yeah.
These, and then down here, the two of us agree that we should do something for the library.
Okay. But in terms of, I'm going, I'm doing...
These ones are not, yeah, but they're not even included in the total.
Okay, so they're completely out.
Yeah.
So the disagreement we're having is the library and also the people that are not with us.
So should we have two votes on each of those topics?
You don't necessarily have to.
Okay.
You can have a discussion and come to some consensus, and then we can vote. So I'm still not in favor of the library. I'd be amenable to give them some money, and they can do what they want. They kind of do that when we do salaries, but I'm not...
I heard Ruth left.
Ruth's left.
Ruth did leave, but she, because of the way they're continuing, she's an actual employee until, I believe, December 13th. Because of the time she had.
Well, I mean, you could take a position and say, "We'll go 50%." Right? I mean, if you want to say, "You take it to your funds, library, because, you know, you're independent."
I'm just, I'm having a problem with the philosophy that they're giving us a little...
I know, I understand that. I'm trying to figure out how we get through it. Because I think you're... I agree with you. You're accurate. We faced that a couple of times. But these are different times. We just need to get this behind us as best we can. So, and I think the best way to do that is, let's just let them solve it, you know? We'll let them, we'll fund them X and...
All right, I will go and say, "I will fund 50% of the library people."
Where do they get...
And then fund the other 50% if they want to.
I think that's fair. I think it's a fair position, given that in the past, they have always said, "We are independent. We will make our own decisions about this." There were several different subjects, so...
And the reason that they do that is because they feel frustrated that we are not supportive of them. So I think this would be a great chance to show that support and to include them and to say that we are. But to me, I think it's a difference.
I won't argue with that. I'm just saying, you know, between, with all due respect, between the three of us, we need to reach a decision on how we're going to, what we're going to do. And if, I guess in hindsight, Scott, probably the best thing to do is just fund, just say, "Let's do it," and be done.
Each of us has a different opinion, and we'll vote accordingly, so...
That sounds good.
So what about the people that have left?
Where do you stand on that?
The people that have left?
Yeah. Mr. Brown's the deciding vote on both of these.
I know, right?
I'm sorry?
You're the deciding vote on both of these.
You're taking advantage of my loss of hearing. You're that doctor. I told everybody here, I left my batteries, the hearing aids, I had spares. They're not there anymore. This is what you get when you worked 20 years in helicopters, okay? So bear with it.
Katrina and I are in disagreement about the people that are, that have left, but served us during that particular time period.
Yes.
I'm in favor of paying them, she is not.
Okay.
So you can decide that.
I am in favor of paying them. They were exposed, or possibly exposed, while they worked for the town illegally.
I think that's great.
You know, I think they should get some compensation for that.
So it sounds like...
Everybody.
Sounds like we're funding everybody. Except for those people in the third section, which took their laptops home or whatever. So that's the 48, 165?
No, that's more because you're adding, the 48, 165 is the 18 in that, right?
Give me just a minute. So we would be at...
There's no way of saying, "Well, these people were exposed, these people were not exposed." The fact is, if you work through the transfer station, if you...
It was an awful time.
You know, you had the same opportunity as everybody else to get...
So Andy said it'd be 56,000, and tell me, 188 for the total. And I would have loved to have turned it on other things. I agree, this is, it's hard to spend that much money. I just, I think that this has been a really hard year. And we've done something for part of the people that work for the town, and I feel like it's time to...
Well, the federal government is the first part of it.
Well, this is actually in the ARPA funding that is the same thing.
It's probably the federal government. But, so 56, what is it?
56,188 dollars.
So I move that we expand 56,188 dollars for the people listed on this list in sections one, two, and the last two that are the library people. Funds to come from the ARPA funds that we got from the federal government.
I second it.
Great. Welcome?
I'll... Always in favor.
Hi.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Great.
See you, we'll get a little...
Did I give you a bone?
A little bone? I'm not sure you gave it to me. I think Mr. Brown gave it to me, but...
No hearing aids at all. No, it was to you. You gave gistle for that one.
I assume he's going to turn it over, but...
Is it okay with you if we do them?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then, because you're going to do... Right, you're going to do the...
You have Chris and the deputy chiefs.
So Jeff?
Yes. We're going to have Chris go first?
Yeah, that would be great.
That's what we usually do, so it would be...
Yeah, no problem at all.
Easier to get him in and out and...
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Can I join you?
I just turned it over to you.
That's fine.
Thank you all for having me back. I was thinking, if it's okay, I could just say a few things about kind of the state of McGregor. And then, I think last year I did a PowerPoint, but I figured this year, just kind of keep it simple. So, you know, first of all, the overall state of McGregor, you know, continue... It continues to be the case that the volunteers that work for McGregor are my heroes. In the last year, they've covered 100% of their, of the first and second due calls at McGregor. And what's actually kind of remarkable to me is we ran these numbers for kind of year-to-date this year. And they've actually covered 85% of those third due calls, so those calls that occur when the other two ambulances are out. And to put that in perspective, Dover and Rochester, both obviously bigger cities, really only run two ambulances at a time. So that really just speaks to kind of the robustness of the volunteer effort. One of the challenges that is created, I think, partially by COVID and partially just the healthcare structure throughout the state, has been actually our paramedic staffing challenges. So I never thought I'd see the day, right, where it's harder to recruit a paid paramedic than it is a volunteer EMT, right? It's kind of a baffling thing for me right now. So to review, we have typically one paramedic on 24/7, right? We always guarantee to have at least one. Sometimes during the weekdays, we'll have two when we're at our busiest. And the reason why that's important, and I know many of you know this, but just to give you a few examples, a paramedic is the, an EMT class is about 110 hours. A paramedic class is more like 2,000 hours, right? It's really a program. A lot of people do it as an associate's degree. So some examples of what a paramedic can do that an EMT cannot, right? So an EMT, if, God forbid, anyone goes into cardiac arrest, an EMT can show up, put the AED on, shock the person, do CPR, hopefully get that pulse back. But once the pulse is back, which is basically what they're going to do at the hospital, right? So that's what me as an advanced EMT, what I can do. Once the pulse is back, though, you want to keep that heart going. And the paramedic is the one that brings to the table the anti-arrhythmic drugs to kind of keep that, you know, person from going back into cardiac arrest. Another example is there are certain heart arrhythmias where we actually give a drug to actually temporarily stop the heart, right, for about 30 to 45 seconds. You can imagine, making that decision to give that particular drug is a pretty high-stakes thing. And so having people who have the skill and the judgment to know whether or not to give it is very important. If the airway is swelling, right, the paramedic is the one that can cut into the throat to keep that airway open for someone. And then, you know, very important for the comfort of our patients, paramedics have a lot more tools in the toolbox to manage pain. So if someone is in, you know, has a broken bone or something, to manage pain. So we really view that as a very, very important thing that we bring to the table and that we have. And Lee's kind of in an interesting situation. I mean, Durham's right next to Dover, Dover has paramedics. Lee's kind of right in the middle of Dover and Exeter, which are really the two next closest places that regularly have paramedics. Epping has a paramedic sometimes, Newmarket, there's talk of them getting a paramedic sometimes. But it's very hit or miss, right? So part of what we've been looking at is really evaluating, and what we're seeing, when I started in EMS, to take a step back, is if you were a paramedic, really, the only place you could work was on an ambulance, for the most part. Sometimes they'd hire you as a, like a tech in the ER. But you can imagine with the nursing shortage, right? There are a lot of places, and it's not just hospitals, but it's also urgent cares and whatnot, that are very eager to hire these paramedics because they bring with them a lot of that clinical judgment and the ability to handle those emergent cases. So for example, one of my paramedics that actually lives in Lee right now works full-time for Exeter Hospital in a cardiac cath lab, right? And manages the, I believe, the nerve blocks, you know, specifically, right? So not at all, he works for us on Sundays typically, but his full-time job is with Exeter Hospital. And so as the job opportunities have really increased and become more available to these folks, it has become harder and harder to recruit internally. And the majority of our paramedics actually are people who have been, kind of fell in love with EMS when they were volunteering for us and then stayed on. But you can imagine that doesn't totally keep up with keeping that 24/7 paramedic. So part of what we've had to look at is really adjusting the pay rates for our paramedics. Because what we found is, people like working at McGregor because it's a 911 service. We have the volunteers that are very enthusiastic. They like the teaching aspect of the organization. But they're not willing to, you know, they're only willing to take a pay cut that's so big, right? So we've had to kind of increase that to meet the need. So I'd say that that's kind of the number-one biggest challenge that we have right now. The number-two largest challenge that many of you have heard before, of course, is our station. We are still in our kind of temporary emergency facility that we moved to as a result of COVID and also the deadly mold that was growing in our building. UNH is in the process of renovating our old facility, but that's really not a long-term solution, right? It's going to be a much healthier building when we do go back to it. But it's still, you know, and fundamentally, probably the biggest issue with it is you can only park two ambulances there. And I just mentioned, we covered 85% of our third due calls. That's because we were able to have all three ambulances at our station, right? If our ambulance isn't there, it becomes a lot harder to do that. So that increases response times and whatnot. So that's kind of the overview as to where we're at right now. So to speak to the appropriation for just a minute, you know, as with any town department, right? And we consider ourselves, you know, we exist entirely to serve the local communities. Our, we consider this a request, right? The appropriation is based on three fixed costs. It's based on the cost of the dispatch center, which we use along with Lee Fire Department through UNH, our rent to the university, and then our nighttime paramedic coverage, right? Which, and I'll say it, the pay increase we did is not reflected in next year's appropriation request because we did it later in the year. What we then do is, we have that total amount, we absorb some of those costs ourselves, and then we allocate it to each of the four communities we serve, so Durham, Lee, Madbury, and UNH, based on call volume. And that's always been in a single year. Now, as you can imagine, UNH was shut down for much of 2020. So imagine what happened to their call volume. And I'm sorry, did all of you have my letter here? Would it be helpful if I sent that around?
While he's ending this, Chris was talking to me, to Ruth, last week about their temporary facility. And as he was talking to me, I realized that I actually used to show cattle in the location of McGregor. It's currently operating in, in the T school.
Are you done with the cow market? Where are you?
We are, so you know where the greenhouses are? In the new veterinary diagnostic lab. We're right behind that in Putnam Hall, which is, yeah, part of the old T school. And it is the case, there's, we found a picture of the room that we mostly exist in with the cows, so...
So the 4-H championship dairy show there.
Yeah. And I like cows, actually. UNH named a cow after McGregor, which was kind of cool. But, yeah, nothing but the best for us. So it wasn't quite what I envisioned, you know, when I was entering medicine, going to work every day. But that's okay. It's not what it's about. So you can see that here, at the bottom of this first page, right, the responses to UNH actually went down 57%. Now, Lee's went down too because of COVID, all the, basically all the towns did, except, and not to minimize Madbury, but Madbury has so few calls, right? Little things impact their percentage quite a bit. But because of the outsized decrease to UNH, what that serves to do is drive up the appropriate, you know, the percentage that Lee potentially has to absorb. And I should say at this point, right, that for all the towns combined, we're asking for $1,600 more next year, which is a very small percentage of our operating budget. So our proposal, right, and at some point, I need someone kind of officially from the town to tell me, yes, Lee is in favor of this, assuming that you are, is that we move to a three-year rolling average when we look at call volume, okay? To kind of spread out, because every year, what will happen is you'll have a few patients that are very high needs in one of the communities, right? And that'll increase the call volume for that community. And it results in these kind of outsized fluctuations. So the three-year increase, I think, will be of benefit in this COVID environment, right, to kind of offset that, the impact of UNH. But also will be useful to the towns going forward. Now, essentially, we'd be changing a formula that, to my knowledge, has been in existence since the beginning of time, right? Since long before I was with McGregor. So what I've kind of said is, we wouldn't do this unless all, all four of the communities agree. The only community that kind of serves to lose out in the short term is UNH. And I asked them first, and they are, you know, in favor of this change, so... With that said, maybe I should shut up and entertain questions.
I have a question. So if we do a three-year average, though, and this amount, very non-normal year, will be affecting our percentage for the next two years going forward after that? Because it'll continue to show up for three years, right?
That's correct, yeah. So essentially, what it does, it spreads out the increase to Lee over three years, right? But I think in some ways, the longer-term benefit, right, is more just to normalize things every year.
Well, the only thing, the only thing I want to say is that, as a customer of yours twice, at 2:00 in the morning, I can tell you, I was really, really, really happy to hear you come in. And I was really, really happy to get loaded on board and get back to the, or get to the hospital. So I support you 100%. You all do a great job, a great job. I mean, they were right there, along with our fire department, I might add. And I was a happy camper to have all of it, you know?
I also had a family member that was a customer this year. So I too am in full support.
I've written that, 10,000 bucks once.
Yeah, I often say when I take care of patients, you know, it's nice to meet you, but I'm sorry, it's like this, right?
So true.
I think the only thing that would stop me improving your three-year averages if UNH walked in and you said they didn't, so.
No, they were, yeah, they were the first ones I asked because it's really like an $8,000 increase, you know, difference to them, right? And they're having a, and honestly, I spoke with VP Clement up there. And what he says, look, you know, we are, you know, we need to be supporting the surrounding town. So I thought that was nice to hear from him.
Excellent, thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that enough of a response for you?
Do you have an official yes?
Chris said that you said you were looking for a social response.
I need to find out exactly what my board wants in terms of that. I think the most, it might be an email exchange or just something. But this may also be fine. So I have a meeting next week with them, so.
Could you speak, and we ask you this every year. We ask Bill, when he was doing this, in terms of your space, what, you speak about the short term, back into the same building, but what is the long term? Are they still put that on hold first, or what's the whole?
So, you know, there's been talk of a joint public safety complex that would house UNH PD, the Durham Fire Department, and McGregor. Frankly, I mean, that is, you know, what they're talking about is a multimillion dollar price tag, so. I just don't know, right? But I, it doesn't strike me, you know, I hope I'm wrong about this, that either the town or the university are going to be eager to jump at that. What I have kind of pitched to UNH is, listen, set aside, and they've done this in the past, right? Set aside some land that you'd be willing to give us. And there's models, by the way, with other universities doing this for ambulance services. And allow us to fundraise around a building. Because part of, you know, I think the benefit, I hope, that we have as a nonprofit is the ability to fundraise some. And if nothing else, having some money in our coffers, right? That's really, we have a small building fund set aside, but it's, you know, probably one-tenth of what we would need, right? It gives us greater options down the road, so that's the possibility. The other possibility, right, is to move us back into, into the space that we're in now, down the road. What makes that tough for UNH, right, is their estimate to renovate that space is $1 to $2 million for us. So it's, in some ways, it's, it gets really close to what it would cost to build a brand-new facility. So.
We know that story.
And the other thing, just, and you already know this, in terms of what we get for what we pay, we get a very good deal.
Yes.
So if you look at other towns that provide, or how third parties provide what you provide, and they don't do as good a job as you guys do, we're getting a very good deal. You know, Madbury's going, everybody's getting a very good deal. So your people do a very nice job, and you do it very cost-effectively, so.
Well, I appreciate you saying that. I mean, ultimately, we are here to serve the, serve all the communities. So that's the, that's the goal.
And I haven't used your facility, so let's keep it that way. Let's keep this relationship going.
You don't know what you're missing.
All right.
You know how valuable it is.
Yep.
Anything else? A yes from all of us, and that way, if you have to, you know.
That's fine.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May it be boring as well.
Me too.
Good evening.
Jeff.
Yes.
Hello.
Before we start, just to let you know, our guys just went to Lebanon, Maine with our AirVans. So if I have to jump out, we, because I haven't, anybody else on the call? I'm in it usually, so.
If we get, no, do you have a, do you have it on you? Or are we going to hear?
I asked you if to text me if we get another call. That way, I don't have my pager going off.
Yeah.
But. So I believe everybody's got a copy of Chief Nemeth's explanation for the budget this year? Everybody have a chance to go through it?
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess I'm here just to answer any questions you guys might have regarding his proposed budget and his explanations. I'll do my best. If I can't answer something, I'm texting with him and.
I have Scott's number on speed dial.
Yep, I've got him loaded and taxed right now, and he's standing by his phone, so.
So as far as in there, it's saying that obviously the volunteers are way down. I know this. However, he's requesting to make them part-timers. What was the difference? I didn't see, like, what was the difference in, is it going to be significant? Maybe he did put it in here.
Where we only have truly six call firefighters on, on board right now. And a lot of them don't come in a whole lot because they're busy with their other jobs.
Right.
It's not going to reflect that big of a cost, moving them to part-time. And it actually helps clean up our budget because right now, we have it spread out with call firefighters, night differential, part-timers, full-timers, full-time lieutenant. So the budget, and the way he proposed it is, we're basically going to zero out the line items that we don't currently use. And we're going to incorporate those into our line items that we, we use for.
For part-timers.
Part-timers.
Make them part-timers, and it's probably around the same, not, not.
Probably will be.
A little bit near.
In the end of it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Their total budget request over last year was less than $19,000 with all those changes, so.
Yeah, Chief and I have worked really hard to provide the town with the coverage it needs, given the circumstances we have with the lack of personnel. I mean, Chris spoke to it a little bit. Recruitment is at an all-time low. We literally have six people on the department now that live in town. Everybody else is out of town. So they're responding back for calls. It just doesn't happen anymore. Like, like I said, they just went to Lebanon, Maine in the AirVans. I'm in it. As far as I know, I have to refresh my phone, but, and that's not unusual. I live in town. I end up hanging and covering in case we get a second call. And we actually had two med aides stay at the same time. So we had to split crews and.
So those are the two full-timers?
Full-timer and a part-timer.
That are, what are?
Yep.
Is there, there's two full-timers usually on, right?
Uh, no, we staff four shifts.
Oh, you alternate, okay.
One full-timer, and we put a part-timer in with them to make it, two personnel on during 24/7.
24/7, yeah. Okay, so. So you're, but you're actually just filling in because you were in town.
I'm just in town. Chief and I try to work out at least one of us be available for any substantial call or whatever. If they go out and we get another call, we try to make, make sure one of us is available to come back. And I, I'm in town, so it's easier for me, but he's not that far over the border in Durham where he can't come back and help out too, so.
I'm just wondering, is there going to be a circumstance where you have the guys that are on too 24/7, and they have to be called somewhere? And you or Scott are not?
That's totally possible. And that's where we rely on our mutual aid system.
Right, okay.
Durham is, luckily for us, Durham, the captains listen in. They, they hear us going out and they hear us getting another call. A lot of times, they'll get in their truck before we even call for them to come over because they know we need the help. And we do the same for the other towns.
Right.
Durham, Madbury and stuff, so.
I'm good. It was, it was pretty clean this year.
Yeah.
We were concerned because of the big changes. I mean, our department is evolving. I've never seen anything like it. I've been here going on four years. And when I started as a call firefighter, we had a full-timer lieutenant and a full-time chief and probably 15 call guys. And to see the town put on four full-time firefighters, go 24/7 in that amount of time is just, I've, I've never seen it. So we really appreciate the support.
It's huge.
And there's a huge need because we are not, we were not covering our calls. He wrote in here, 44% of our night shifts in the last two months before the full-time didn't get covered. We had nobody on. And unfortunately, a lot of times, that fell on me to be listening at home all night and get up and run in. And if I'm lucky, one of the guys that is also listening is coming in. And it gets kind of hard as a retired, retired guy that's already put 30 years in to have to listen all night and get up and go in. So this really takes a load off of us, and it, and it's better for the town.
Oh, yeah.
Our response times are much quicker. You don't see McGregor beating us to calls at night anymore because our guys are here, they're ready to respond, and they get out the door. Which is, I mean, it took upwards of 10 minutes before I could get into the station, get in a truck and respond. Whereas the guys can get up, get down on the truck within two minutes and get there before we could even potentially get to the station previously. So the service has definitely increased. It has been a struggle to provide the coverage for shifts. We're still, I mean, we're working on it. We're upping our part-timers, hiring part-timers so we can cover all of our shifts. And I think we're getting there, but we're not quite there yet.
Well, I, I think, you know, it's, it's a great piece of paper. It really is. It's got a lot of information in it.
Chief puts a lot of effort into this.
The one that captures, the one that captures me is on page nine. It's the second paragraph down where it says, "Call volume clearly indicates the department has been unable to keep pace with the rapid growth of Lee. The increased call volume coupled with ever-increasing complexity of its mission shows no sign of abating in the future, which in turn will necessitate continuing review of personnel policy. Our department continues to make strides at staffing levels and coverage but are still not meeting industry standards. It is clear that at some point, there will be no choice but to establish a completely full-time department in order to provide the service our residents expect." And I think that's really the goal, is we're going to have to add more full-time. We've got, we've got 11 more houses going in across the street in the next couple of years. All right, it's been through, it's going to happen. We've got, I mean, we've just got to, we've got to do something. We've got to help you do something, but, but it's got to happen.
Well, we're pushing the best we can to move forward without, you know, we realize the burden that's being placed on the town, the taxpayers. So we try to keep things reasonable, but to keep our staff safe and to provide the best service to the town, we have to keep pushing for more help. And that's what we want you to do. Keep pushing, and we'll, we'll do our best to make it happen.
I think that you. Go ahead. Did you talk to any of the local, other towns around? Everyone is struggling with this. And I think the fact that you have ept and flowed so quickly and figured out the needs of what, of what the town has and figured out how to fill those voids is incredible. And like you said, you know, maybe the town has been helpful, but you've been incredible at, at making that happen. It's not happening everywhere, so. You should be really proud of it.
Yeah, we see that too. And like I said, we appreciate the support.
You took a look at the chief's call breakdown. The biggest percent, the biggest section is road calls.
Yeah, because of.
So I think if we block off 125, we're going to have more than napping.
I could save a lot of money.
For it, you know.
Accidents.
I, I think, geez, our call volume will go down significantly, so.
That is true.
The year they put those rubble strips in really reduced the large.
Don't get me started on the rubble strips.
No, it really did reduce a bunch of those big accidents that we were having, so.
But they put them too close to the driving.
I know, that's.
I don't know, I've, I've personally been to over five fatals in the last three years myself.
Right.
And I work, I, I retired out of Exeter full-time with over 20 years there. And with the exception of before they did the work to 101, I haven't seen anything like it. In such a short, short period.
25 is not a.
I worked for the town for five weeks, and I think I've seen four major accidents between 152 and Nottingham and the traffic circle over the office.
Absolutely.
Are there things that we, I guess, can't fix right now? Is there nothing, is there things that we should be thinking of or that we need to do?
I don't really know if there's really much that we can do to stop it. I mean, there seems to be no rhyme or reason to the accidents we're responding to. People are crossing the center line. A lot of the accidents are on straightaways. I'm sure we get our share of distracted drivers. I mean, you still see people on their phones all over the place. You know, alcohol impairment. I don't know if there's really anything that we can do as a town that would curb the motor vehicle accident issue. I don't know, Chief or Rossfield might have some suggestions, but.
They're just passing curbs.
That's what it is.
D O T, when the D O T did the traffic count out here, what, a couple, I'll say a month ago, two months ago, maybe, it was 20,000, 20,000 cars a day, cars and trucks a day going down that.
And they're 40,000.
It's not only 125. I've done a few fatals on North River Road.
Really? Oh, because they're cutting through?
We had one on Madison Road.
152, 55.
We had one last spring, I believe, on North River Road. I went to a fatal motorcycle accident at Kirkwood Corners. So it's not just 125. We're seeing it throughout town.
Yeah.
Jeff, what's the status of the new truck?
It is currently being built. We're going out to Wisconsin the first week in January to, for a production.
Are you sure you want to go to Wisconsin?
No, I don't want to go to Wisconsin in January.
I don't think they're going to move it to someplace else nicer for us to visit, so. I'm kind of excited to go because this has kind of been my project.
That's great.
What are you looking at, delivery?
I believe we're still on track for like an April, May delivery.
Is there anything that we need to do with the budget for the new truck?
No, everything, I believe, is figured in. New equipment, a lot of that has been ordered with the purchase of the truck. Some of it, we have left over from the other truck that we were using. And some of it is in our capital improvement, like thermal imaging cameras and gas meters and stuff like that. So I think we've got a pretty good handle on, on that truck.
What's it replacing, two?
Engine one, which is, we're struggling to keep in service. I mean, we just had an exhaust issue with it. We've had some air, air leak issues. We're, we're able to correct the problems without dumping a ton of money into it. But it's starting to see its age, and maintenance is becoming an issue, and it, it's time. These trucks, even though they don't get run as much as in the big city, they're still a mechanical piece of equipment that, you know, whether they're sitting, running, they still wear out. And 20 years is a long time to have a fire truck. Especially with the changes in technology and safety stuff. A lot, engine one doesn't have airbags, doesn't have cooling air protection, stuff like that, that these new trucks have now. They make it a lot safer for us.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any other questions?
Call, call the chief and tell him that we're asking really hard questions.
We said no, all right.
See what he has to say. Tell him we beat you up, we beat you up, but you weren't able to overcome.
Beef it up for him.
All right, good. Make it.
The only increase this year for the employees that he's requesting is just changing the volunteers to part-timers?
Uh, well, actually, we are, we're asking for an increase in overtime to cover the cost of the full-time fire, um, full-time vacation, sick leave, personal leave.
Coming in.
And when you put on full-timers, you have to budget for those.
Right.
Because they're going to have their time to take off, and we have to backfill. And we only have four full-timers, so a lot of that's going to be backfilled with, with part-time people, so.
The ABC should also be aware that the board did some market adjustments last night. So those will hit the budget as well. So what you're seeing is not necessarily what their budget's going to be next year. The other thing the board is going to be doing after evaluations are done in this.
The other thing the board is gonna be doing after evaluations are done in December, maybe first part of January, there's gonna be a series of merit increases in cost of living decisions that we're gonna make. So that's gonna affect every budget. So just be aware of that. So if you're seeing, you know, two hundred, uh, six hundred and thirty thousand, it's gonna be more than that most likely. So just, just be aware of that, so.
So recycle? That what we learned last night? Recycle. We, everybody, everyone to recycle so you can make some more money. The one where we get the money in, so.
Well, I don't think the chief took the many under seriously when I told him, since it's your project, I'll share this with you. One of the things I told the chief is the next time you buy a fire engine, can you get the less shiny ones so it costs less?
Let's go.
And he didn't seem to appreciate that.
No.
I think this particular-
I'll leave the, the paint finish fire trucks alone. That, that, I stay out of that conversation. Uh, there is one other item he wanted to be, to make sure everybody realized, uh, the alarms line item that he put in in September for a thousand dollars. We had to bump up to five thousand.
Oh, wow.
The reason for that is because we took over servicing and inspecting all the fire alarm systems in town and-
Oh, just gonna move over from another place?
Yeah, so I just wanted, if there was a question as to why there's a difference, that's the reason is because we took over that responsibility, so.
And one of the things that you guys, and I don't know if you're starting this or continuing it, is in terms of the, the, um, business visits? Because you guys kind of stopped that for a little period of time.
The inspections?
Yeah, inspections in terms of, so you're back doing those again?
Uh, yes, uh, definitely because of COVID, we had to kind of curtail our operations. And we've also been focusing on some, um, some businesses to work with them. But business, business inspections, daycare inspections, foster care inspections are still all going forward. We're still working on those.
Excuse me, when you said, uh, on that alarm issue, you said you took it over? That we took over the-
Right.
From who?
Uh, I believe-
Was that burned?
The contractor. The, that, Julie had had that.
Yeah.
I'm not a hundred percent positive, but I think Julie had that responsibility in her budget.
Yeah.
You know, we weren't, we weren't getting the inspection services in for the fire alarm systems previous, before September. And now, and now we've taken that on, so that's been evolved into our budget. Other than that, if you have any other questions?
I just have one comment, less budget-related and more community engagement. You mentioned we're getting that new truck in April. It might be a fun way to have the taxpayers see what their money is paying for, introduce it to the town. I don't know, do we give fire trucks names these days? Like maybe we could have like a naming of the truck?
I think that's so fun.
I've got two small kids, so I need some community activities.
We've got some snowplows.
Uh, there is a tradition in the fire service where when you get a new truck, you actually put, the guys push the truck, the new truck into the station.
Oh, okay, fun. Can we do part-time?
More than, I mean, usually it's a public event. A lot of times, a whole lot of people don't show up for that.
We're all in.
Our doors are always open.
Right.
Anytime anybody wants to come in, see the fire trucks, talk to us, especially now that things in COVID have relaxed a little bit. But I will definitely mention that to chief and-
Cool.
Something when they got the pumper, I think.
We can break, we can break a bottle of champagne over there.
Right, yeah. Maybe do another ice cream social. Everybody can use that.
We haven't gotten a new truck since I joined the department, so I haven't seen what we does.
We can reinvent this.
Yeah, do something, yeah.
No, three was here before I got here.
Wow.
So this is kind of exciting for me too, so.
Awesome, so we should celebrate.
Great. Truck replacement. What's the next one on the list to be replaced with?
Uh, engine two and the rescue are actually gonna be going out at the same time. So we're gonna, what we're thinking about doing is a two-for-one deal. We got the rescue in on a grant and, you gotta remember, I wasn't here for that, but I believe we got it in on a grant and engine two's coming up to the end of its frontline service life. So we're, we're talking about doing a rescue pumper. And having the rescue tools and stuff on the pumper. A lot of the equipment that's on the pumper are on the rescue now. And it'll have, it'll have like a dual purpose.
Sounds great. One last thing that needs to be stored in a garage in the town. Sounds good to me.
We certainly have the room for it.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks everybody down there for it.
Yeah, great group. We're, uh, exciting times.
Interesting, that's for sure.
That too. And it's fair share stress, but it's what we're all about.
Thank you for everything, I do.
All right, thank you.
Thanks a lot, Jim.
You wanna do planning and zoning here?
Sure, I can give you an overview of the planning and zoning. Um, the one thing I am noticing, Karen had given me a budget packet, but I don't see the code enforcement officer's salary. Uh, I think the budget information she gave me, which was part of the adjustment last night, it was not, um, a major adjustment that will bump a little bit from last year. The primary increase, uh, in the planning and zoning budget, um, the eleven thousand dollar jump was because Karen had been working with my predecessor Julie, um, in looking at having an online building permit system. They asked for bids. Uh, our present assessing software company, Avatar, does not offer an online permit system. Uh, the most competitive rate they got was eleven thousand dollars. This is a forty-four hundred dollar startup fee for online building permits and then an annual subscription fee of sixty-six hundred dollars. And Karen, uh, doesn't feel that it's worth the money. Said that the number of times that they're actually, you know, called upon to have online permitting is few and far between. Uh, they, they can handle the permits in the traditional manner that they have, and she would advise against, um, including the eleven thousand dollars, the forty-four hundred and the sixty-six hundred. And if you take that, uh, eleven thousand out, her budget is actually down a little bit. Um, before the salary adjustment, uh, it was projected at a hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars, which is down a little bit from a hundred and five from the prior year. The reason that's down a little bit is they did not renew the, um, lease on their big copier that they had, um, in the planning and zoning department and are using a standard copier and, uh, the infrequently the town's larger copier if they need it. Um, that's the, the two thousand dollars of difference. And in actuality, when you factor in the wage adjustment, it will be closer to last year's budget of a hundred and five thousand. But otherwise, the budget had no changes.
What about the traffic regional planning commission?
Uh, decision was, uh, I think was made, uh, at last night's select board meeting not to, um, pay the dues at this time.
I don't think that was the decision that we made. I thought we decided not to decide.
My recollection either.
Yeah.
My recollection, uh, my recollection was we asked you to ask Karen her opinion of it.
Right.
And I just asked the conservation commission downstairs, which I did, and they were talking about it when I left. So those are, that's where I think-
We're, we're still researching whether to move forward with that.
We did get an email today. Um, I had been working with, um, Colin about the bike lane potential and we had been moving forward with that, kind of under the idea that he, we were going to eventually pay dues. And they had to explain to me that they would no longer be able to help us because that's one of those services that costs a lot of money that we can't, we can't use. So, um, you know, he was willing to come and meet with us, give us different options, help us find grants, all those things. That's all included. And now, until we decide to pay dues, he can't really help us make progress.
I was copied on that email from Jen. Uh, I, I will say that I have talked to Karen multiple times regarding membership and Karen remains opposed to paying membership dues.
Where does the scanning project stay?
They, they would be able to give us two weeks of scanning, right? That is-
That was what this was.
Without us being members, without us having to pay?
No, we would not be members. So that already is gonna cover that, that cost. Just that they're not gonna necessarily do, like, they'll scan it, but they can't put exactly, you know, necessarily the, the final pieces of it because of the way that they name things.
What Jen said was their priority for the scanning project is going to be dues-paying communities. And after they've handled the dues-paying communities, they would, they would look to what they can do for. Right now, there are four communities that don't pay dues, one of those being Madberry, which I don't believe has ever participated because of their, um, no, Mad, it wasn't Madberry, it was Brookfield, uh, very small town, less than a thousand population that she said had never.
There are eighteen communities and fourteen of them currently pay dues. Three are putting it on the warrant article for March and then one that doesn't, uh, two, yeah, three.
Two, Nottingham and, um, maybe that's right.
So we'd be the only ones, yeah. We'd be the only ones that really aren't deciding.
Truly think you're crazy if we're not.
Okay.
Um, the issue, I'm gonna be very delicate here. The issue with, no, I'm not, I moved on.
Oh.
I've moved on to another subject. Well, one that he brought up. In terms of the eleven thousand dollars for that system, can we figure out a way to do that process so that more than one individual is involved in that process?
Yeah.
Do you, you know where I'm getting at? And I'm not saying anything about anybody, uh, but I think that's one of those particular auditing things, that the trail needs to be a little bit more robust in terms of, because the same person that collects that particular thing, you know, there's no other oversight in terms of that whole process. So I don't know if there's something we can do administratively. I, I, I agree that the eleven thousand and the ongoing almost five thousand, a little bit more than four is kind of expensive for what we take in for billing permits. So I don't know if there's something administratively we can do differently. Maybe it comes to that particular department, but then they go to the selectman's office to pay for it or something like that, maybe. I, I don't know.
Two points of, yeah.
Yeah, because it's like having your accounts receivable and accounts payable person, the same person. You don't do that. That's, that's a big no-no in accounting. So I'm trying to get to a point where, you know, we don't have that problem or issue.
Nope, that's what I'm just doing to me.
So I don't know if you can check with other towns, what they do. I, I don't know, but if there's an administrative way we can fix it versus this expensive software solution.
Do you think that the conservation commission's gonna give you their final?
Yes, they, I asked them to speak about it and she said they would. Um, they were meeting downstairs.
Okay.
So, uh, we'll hear what they have to say. Oh, no, that's the fire department. They're going to the- So, uh, yeah, so we should have a response from them relatively soon, so, but yeah. Other than, I was okay with Karen's question.
All set with that?
Yep.
Planning and zoning, okay. Are we gonna talk about C I P or?
You're getting nothing from them as far as I understand. In terms of that yet.
So are we gonna have to schedule another meeting with them or are they just gonna give us something?
I do not know.
We don't know.
If they don't produce anything, is it something that we could put on the warrant article this year?
You, in terms of what do you wanna put on the warrant?
About changing how, how we, who we have on this, if you'd have more broader experience.
Different committee. They, they allow you two ways to do that.
Yeah. Because that way we could have a, a, a wider variety of people from the town and you could have those dates come in when we give them to.
You could, you could. It definitely is a thing we have to put on the warrant to change it.
That's what I'm saying. So could we, could we plan to do that?
We still need to provide those money as warrant articles to fund those.
Yep.
Fund the C I P, yeah.
You'll, you'll get those out of the financial planning tool. We're supposed to meet tomorrow, but it's my fault that we're not meeting. We're meeting next Monday. So you will get that information out of the financial planning tool as well. You won't get what the planning board is recommending, but you'll get what financial planning tool is pointing out.
At least there's a backup coming.
Can someone here talk about the financial planning tool tonight or is that?
We, we can. I don't have anything to show you. The board is working through that particular process. We've met with Steve, who has, is the major player. Uh, he had like forty percent of all the entries. Um, next Monday, we're getting the fire chief to talk about his particular items. After that, I don't think there's anybody left. Do you two remember?
I don't think there's any way to talk about the financial planning tool. You gotta see it. You gotta, you gotta see the whiff of the breath.
But they're welcome to come.
So are we going to?
Yep, you can-
I mean, it's on obviously our schedule here, so I'm just wondering.
You can come to the meeting. The meeting on Monday is sort of six, six o'clock or what? I don't know what you said before.
The select board meeting is typically five.
Yeah, I think it was all time.
We did the F I P, financial planning tool at five so that people could-
Yeah, maybe just verify. Cause I know everyone doesn't.
So one day is that?
It's Monday the sixth.
Okay.
Um, it should be on the website.
At five to six-thirty, it has the hard copy, six-thirty for the fire.
What is it?
Five to six-thirty.
Monday the sixth at five.
Monday.
So you can come to see it.
Think you put it in, hold on.
But, uh, basically, it's a big spreadsheet. John Tappin is assisting us with it. And it goes through soup to nuts in terms of all the things that have been identified. So the board is working through it, understanding what is actually in it, getting updated information. And the board is gonna have to decide, this is what we're going to fund for the future and this is what we're not gonna fund or this is what we're delaying. So there's a whole bunch of decisions.
So this is kind of, I'm learning.
We are too, we are too.
This is kind of another way to get the same information as having that committee give you information.
More.
It's more information, but it would actually have amounts.
Yep.
Yes.
And projects that it would be. Yep.
So in theory, we could have the warrant articles from there, even though they haven't given us-
Yep, you could.
I'm, I'm trying to-
Yep, you could.
Is this potentially, are we gonna have both or is this something that might replace the C I P?
If we're re, if we're restructuring how we do the C I P though, then I think we could.
Your C I P would be two types of things. That's really required and this is a tool that the select board and the budget committee can use to-
But I think what we've done-
But you still have both.
We've identified things that weren't included on the C I P or those things are not included in the C I P because they're not, um, mandated by the state or they just because somebody didn't-
They're not capitalized, so. It's like, like for instance, the things that they don't track, uh, recruit benefits. That's not a capital fund.
But the buildings were not on it.
No, the buildings were on it.
And those are capital.
Yes.
So we've been missing things for a long time. So this is helping us identify what we've been missing.
Okay.
It, it projects costs too. John has built in projected interest rates and that sort of thing. So you can see the cost of, of delaying a decision or that type of thing very easily.
And that sounds good.
So Scott, when we make, when this group makes its recommendations to the select board, we usually have totals that include the warrant articles that the state they're at when we-
I cannot promise that, cause we, we're just going through, like I said, we're meeting with the fire chief to get his input. It's already in the plan, but he gets presented to it. But many of those particular, um, trust funds that you get deposited, you can get that from the financial pool right? Financial planning tool right now.
But I just meant from the perspective of the product that Tom presents to the select board, they're not gonna be the same this year because we're not gonna have all the pieces that we-
Right. Uh, when are we gonna get the information for the C I P? I'm supposed to give it to you guys on twelve thirteen, so before that, I don't know, or, yeah, right.
Probably just have the operating budget. I think you can glean, it, it, I think we can get from John Tappin a copy of it so you can take a look at it, but I don't think the board's gonna be at a point that time to say, hey, this is definitely what we're gonna do.
Will we get the C I P information?
No.
I cannot speak to that.
You don't know.
We've been told that they're not presenting tonight and they don't have it available. I don't know when they're gonna have it available.
So at our meeting on twelve seven, we're gonna have to talk about all this and, and, uh, guess.
Well, normally you present the operating budget and the total budget. You just won't have anything other than the operating budget this time.
Yeah.
Is that true, Scott? Possibly.
Yep, possibly. I can. You're gonna have the operating budget, but you won't necessarily have this particular-
Those particular things. And I think if you have the financial planning tool and you take a look at it, you can probably glean what those particular deposits are gonna be. You're not gonna get the planning board, as far as I know, to tell you what they're proposing, and I don't think the board's gonna tell you at that particular time, I can't speak for them, but.
Well, as part of Tom's report then, you, in terms of something formal that you presented, or if we presented for assignments, meaning it would just be the operating budget. You got, we're not presenting gleams.
Is any what?
Gleams, you said we could glean something, I think you want us presenting gleams.
No, I think you, you could glean, because it just makes sense, for instance, like, the fire trucks and stuff like that. We're not necessarily tweaking any of that. You can see what it needs to be expanded and how much needs to be put into cover those expenses, so that you can get.
But we usually have a draft of the warrant by then.
You'll have a draft, well, first part of January.
We check out the draft articles by the time.
The cutoff for warrant articles isn't until into January, so you.
Oh, I know, but we usually have, we just have it down. So, if we just do the operating budget, we just do the operating budget.
Twelve seven, we'll have to figure it out.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, cause I, I got, I, I mean, I'm still. I, I still think we have a lot to learn about the financial planning tool and how we're gonna implement it, et cetera. I mean, you know, we've gotten snippets of, of information, a lot of it kind of duplicated.
Well, it hasn't been a problem, but usually we have the CIP, so we can.
The thing is, Carrie, the things that they're asking about, like, how much are we gonna put in crew benefits, how much are we gonna put into the fire department? Those things, we're not necessarily tweaking those, um, because for the tool, you can see how much you have to put into.
My, my point is, I don't know how much left we have to say, okay, we're gonna implement the tool, and here's the numbers, that, that's all, that's all I'm saying.
I don't think they're asking.
It'll take to get there.
Yeah, I don't think they're asking for those things, they're asking for how much to go into the trust funds, I think that's what they're talking about.
Yeah, that's it, I mean, typically, we have the operating budget, and then we have all the other expenses, and we present, uh, Tom presents, to the select board, we root the totals.
So, how about when we meet, oh, I can ask you for that, we can get a copy of the financial planning tool, as it sits right now, uh, from John, a hard copy, and we can distribute it to everybody, so you can take a look and see what it is.
I'd be great.
Because the thing that, but, at least I'm struggling with the financial plan tool, is the big things. How do we pay for a new building if we're gonna do, how do we do, you know, upgrades in terms of this particular structure? That's not necessarily how much is going into the trust funds.
Yeah, see, from our perspective, we don't care, I mean, we, we put in the.
You do.
Well, we do, but, but, to get to the product that we're supposed to have, like, say, last year's addition to the, the, um, trust fund for the fire department was ninety grand. If the financial planning tool says it should be a hundred and twenty-five thousand, that would concern me, cause, you know.
Right, because then you're not gonna get to where you need to be when you need it.
Well, unless you get a live version of the financial planning tool, it's not gonna tell you what you're gonna get, that's no point.
A hard copy will tell me.
Hard, hard copy should tell us, cause we always use hard copies for the CIP.
Yeah, hard copy will tell her. But, for instance, whatever that fire truck is that he's gonna replace and whatever, whatever it is, that's gonna be in there for whatever that particular cost is.
Yep.
But if that particular, uh, expense is two hundred thousand this year, if we do it in five years, John calculates how much based on inflation and stuff, how much that is gonna be, and the tool automatically implements, well, how much you need to put away to make those particular expenses.
We have exact numbers that are based on.
So, how about?
It's purportedly what the CIP did, except without inflation.
You'll post the estimates.
Well, get me started on that. But, yeah, so, how about if I get you a copy of it and let you see it, and then when we meet on the seventh, we can go through it, talk about it.
What, what this, uh, what this committee does is what this committee can't do, and, you know, I just wanted to, this is more to say than the board assignment, um, the product that this committee will have this year may be different, except historically, because of.
Cause we're doing something really big and different, and we don't have what we don't have.
I don't think they're gonna fire you.
I'm not getting a salary, are you getting a salary?
Oh, you know, you might earn a hundred dollars.
Okay. I sent this out to everybody, this is the updated version, um, there was a couple of changes that I still need to make based on what people presented. But, can, and, you guys don't have to stay here if you don't want to, but can we go through these again, so I can force you it over, and I can send you one based on the totals?
What is that?
This particular sheet, I've got, I've got. This is the budget preparation worksheet. So, just like we kind of did last time, can we go down through each one of them, and if you guys agree, we can move that over to what we're recommending.
Which date version was it?
The one dated November twenty-first. I have one copy.
We did this on the one copy.
I'm just thinking, I have, I have so many checks.
If you, yeah.
Steve, you don't need me for anything.
No.
And the information is on there, I'm not gonna learn anything, I don't wanna miss anything.
No, you, you've got all the information, this is just what the ABC is gonna recommend. So, I just would like to get this, so that we can at least have something on the seventh to go through, that we can see, yeah, and this is just the operating budget.
Okay.
Thanks very much.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you pull the warrant out of my bag?
Yeah, I, I guess I'll see if I find it.
So, can we technically stop the?
Yeah, do you need to technically end the?
The board meeting?
Yeah.
Technically stop the board meeting and continue the ABC.
So, I'm turning it back over to Carrie, meeting adjourned.
All right.
Go back there and go forward.
And for, for minutes, we'll just have to, can we just tell Denise?
We'll have recording and I've got, um, pretty good minutes of the general session.
All right.
I'll do a rough copy and give it to Denise tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Thank you.
From the last time, the selectman's budget, are we okay with everything that's in there?
I can tell you what we all decided, I mean, on these, we said okay for.
Okay.
Everybody went down.
Select, I think we done select.
Police department was checked, we did.
Ooh, can we go down, you can order.
Is, what is your order?
Selectman's office.
Oh, selectman's office.
Yeah.
That was okay?
Yeah.
Elections and registrations were okay, tax collector?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, financial administration?
Did we ever get the money in on things?
On which one?
Income.
The income.
Yes.
Yes, he sent it out.
What was financial administration under?
Financial administration?
Yes.
That's the finance officer and, uh, selectman's budget?
Selectman's budget, okay, yeah, I wasn't here for that.
Oh.
Remember, that was, we didn't include that in the last one.
Okay.
Are we okay with what's in there now, or not?
Yes, there was nothing, there was nothing.
IT expenses? We got the information in terms of what's included with those software line items, I don't know if anybody had any issues. No? Assessing.
What was gonna go up on IT, he was gonna go to?
It was.
He was going to voice over IP on the.
It's under computer services, that's what we asked, why increase and what was it? And then software support services was the other one.
Yep.
Uh, assessing, we're good, legal.
Legal was good.
Personnel administration. This, the thing.
The last time we talked about this, the numbers in there didn't reflect a whole.
Yeah, he hasn't given us new numbers yet. The other question, which I did not ask, so I'm negligent, is in terms of the bonus line, it's fifteen thousand, six thirty-three, I don't know what the heck that is. Do you guys remember?
For bonuses?
Yeah.
I think what he did on the personnel administration, cause he couldn't do anything until he had the things, I think he just moved all the numbers over from last year. And I think the requested budget was just, I don't know why there was fifteen, six thirty-three from last year though.
I do not, I don't know what that is.
Question mark.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask him, I don't remember if I was supposed to ask him.
He hadn't made any of the other changes, this whole budget is just a carryover.
Okay, I'll ask him about those, he's supposed to get us numbers, right?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so, big question mark on that one, so I'm gonna move those over.
Is that, there was a lot that depended on how many people Steve was gonna need and changes in the insurance rates and all that stuff.
Okay.
A bunch of changes.
Planning and zoning, we're okay, I'm not happy with the eleven thousand, can we take that out?
Can you take that? No, no, where is it again?
It's under software.
And add in for stress regional party commission.
Did I bring that paperwork?
How much was it?
Well, that's what I'm trying to find.
Five to six thousand, one of, but she went, she came right into your.
Oh, it was like five thousand dollars, right?
How about if I do this, it's fifty, so, how about if I put in, cause I've got the number.
Karen's gonna guess that for the last, like, three, three years or so, I don't know what.
Looks like we last paid it in twenty twenty.
Yeah. So, I'll get the number, cause I've been at home, but you wanna put in whatever that is, right?
Whatever they want for their base amount, I say put in.
All right, and can we take out the eleven thousand for the software for the?
I would say yes, but that's me.
What was it for?
If the president even want it, then I would.
The automating, uh, billing permits.
We need to find a better way to do that.
It's a strange way to control your staff.
Well.
You're gonna do a different, you're gonna do, that was your, what you talked about, the different work around, so you'll get to.
Right, so you find a different way.
Yeah, so, get rid of that and look about changing the process.
Yep.
And we add it in the stress regional party commission, please.
No, 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 I didn't, I didn't, I didn't.
Thank you.
Anything else, are we okay with the rest of Karen's budget?
Do we ever actually spend twenty-five thousand dollars on our legal expenses?
That's the question I ask, because there, as far as I know, we don't have any ongoing.
Right, not yet.
Not now.
It seems really high compared to what we've actually spent the past few years.
Yeah.
Or that's been resolved or whatever, so that's.
Do we wanna reduce it, maybe to ten or fifteen?
I'd reduce it to ten.
Ten? We all okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, ten thousand. All right, everything else you're okay with?
Did Karen say something different on legal, like, or do you know what's going on, or?
I asked the question and, and she didn't give me in terms of anything that was ongoing, I don't know if anything is ongoing, you know.
So, she'll have to let us know if it's.
Well, the thing is, if something comes up, she can always come to the board and say, hey, this is coming up, I need some extra money to.
Yeah, but you have stuff in your budget for that time.
Yeah, there's contingency.
Right.
So, I'll move everything else over, set those two things up, make those changes. Government buildings?
Did, did that include what Steve was talking about?
Yep, cause, uh, if you notice, everything, every, this budget's paying for all the electricity and heat in all the town buildings, so he's put it all in one. So, it's gone from one forty-one to two thirty-four, so that's everything.
And those repairs and all that stuff, all the.
He increased, yep, yep, he increased maintenance and repair from nineteen thousand to thirty-eight, so basically a double.
Can I back up a second to personnel administration, I was misreading this, I was saying he had put any of those numbers in, he's made, the, the fiscal twenty-two budget for personnel administration is almost two hundred grand higher than last year.
Did he make this?
Uh, personnel administration?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's it?
If you look at last year's budget, the twenty twenty-one, it was eight oh one, now it's to a million and five.
I don't have that number, I have, the budget in two thousand twenty was seven hundred and forty thousand.
Now, that's activity.
That one?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm, oh, sorry, you're talking budget, sorry, eight oh one, yep.
So, he did make all those changes, I'm just mistaken.
Well, that's twenty-one to twenty, we're in twenty-two.
Yes.
Right.
So, the twenty-two budget is a ma- is over a million.
Yep.
So, he did make those changes, I was mistaken.
Well, he hasn't updated the rates for twenty-three though, that's what he hasn't done.
We don't have that on here.
Yeah, that's not, that's what he needs to put in there.
Okay, so that we know what's happening.
Yep. Cause I've got a big question mark against that one, so I'm not gonna move that over. So, government building, you okay?
Yep.
Cemetery?
Good.
Yeah.
Uh, insurance, it is what it is.
Yeah.
Other government, nothing, uh, police department?
Yep.
We got already, we were okay with that.
We already did, yeah, everybody was here and agreed.
Um, dispatch, all the dispatches, we're okay with all of them. Ambulance, yep.
Yep.
Uh, fire chief, uh, fire department, excuse me.
Do we get the money from them too, as far as, they get a lot of money, and are they used to, for going and doing those evaluations on?
They don't get very much, they do get some, it'll tell you in the revenue numbers that.
Okay, I don't have the revenue numbers, so.
The other side, yeah, the revenues. The only question I have about his whole thing is, and the whole write-up and the premise, is that he's gonna need more staff in the future, right? So, and he didn't ask for it, he asked to.
First year, neither fire or police asked for anybody.
Yeah, right, and they're scared to ask for it, because they got what they, you know, requested and so forth last year, so, are you go, are you talking with him about it and?
He just switched to the twenty-fours.
Right, no, I know.
So, I think he's waiting for that to settle down, to see what it is, but no, I'm not.
And then see what he.
Yeah, see what he needs after that, cause I think what Jeff was saying is they're in a kind of a transition period.
Yeah, exactly, and I think we know.
And I think it's gonna continue to hit them in terms of getting people to find those positions, even when you advertise, you're not getting anybody.
I know, there's like two hundred and thirty-five positions open across the state, so, which is so.
I still think that we need to be advertising to other fire departments, that if they come here, we can house them somehow. If they wanna go to the university and get their education, you get, you get these kids that are up in other parts of the state, who are already certified and everything, but wanna be students at the university and go through school. And we have an opportunity that we can provide that for them in exchange for like twenty-some hours a week, where they have to provide it.
That's a conversation, yeah, this conversation with the chief, I don't know where you put them, no.
Well, we.
We talked about, we talked about trying to find a spot and everything else, and we just never.
Yeah, the fire department came a couple of years ago with the ambulance service, and we were talking about trying to have.
Jointly.
A joint place, and they never, it never went anywhere, I don't know, they kinda dropped it.
Well, I think for all of these services, we need to have like a hiring plan, like, we need to have a pipeline of candidates or people who might be interested, and actively like pursue them to make them wanna come and work in jobs like that, because young kids are not wanting to be firefighters anymore, that's not like.
They used, they used to have a program now, said they, I think.
We did, the junior, yeah, explorers.
Explorers, the police department had one too, and they kinda like fizzled out.
Yeah.
My daughter Jessie actually.
It's just gonna get worse though, I guess, isn't the point?
With the explorers.
But the problem also is, is they don't wanna come to a department like this, it's not exciting, it's not the big town, I, I, I hate to tell you that, but.
No, no, no.
It's not, they're.
You're saying give them some other incentive to come.
You need to have, you need to be using these, like, kids that wanna go to school, give them for four years.
Well, you had, I don't remember who it was.
And they named something and.
There was a gentleman that volunteered for you guys down there, I don't remember who it was, but he came and he tried it out, and most of your calls are not fires.
Right.
And he wanted to go to fires.
Fires.
It scares me to begin with.
That's in the whole fire industry, the whole fire departments and everything else, it's more exciting.
I was officially a firefighter, I went through the training, I was in this department for a while, I, I, I met all the people that go through the, I understand, kind of, what kind of person goes for this, you know?
So, what we call it, the fire department, is not really the fire department, it's really the automobile assistance program.
Yeah, it's safety.
The fire is out at the market basket in the front there at least once a week.
Really?
You're put, you go and help so-and-so who just got back from their chemo tech stuff, they can't get in the house, so you go over to the house and you help them in. Grandma falls down and gets stuck behind the toilet.
Yep.
Lip assist.
And nobody, yeah, that's, that's ninety percent of your calls.
So, it isn't really fires, it's really public assistance or something, I don't know.
Public.
And they're reporting things.
No. It's things that, things that neighbors used to.
We have, we do have a community of elderly people, or, you know, they're all there, and that's what they need, and that's what we need to provide.
So, I don't know what to tell you.
We have to.
We don't have a place to house them.
Find a creative way to solve this problem, where we have an asset, a university, you know?
Well, that's the only thing I say is Chris Lemon, is he wasn't at the university, he would have a darn hard time finding people to do that.
Right, oh, I agree.
And if they said, and that's why I was asking in terms of where they're moving, if he starts moving away from campus.
Yeah.
He's gonna get less people volunteering, because it's gonna be harder for them to get to that particular thing, right now, they're right on campus, so. You know, kids just walk there, um, to do their, uh, volunteering and stuff, so, if they start moving out of, uh, depends on where they go to community land, if it's like two miles away, he's gonna get next to nobody, he's just gonna maybe get commuter students, but.
Unless they hop on their scooters, there's like five, maybe scooters there. Yeah, right, exactly.
But they can have buses, but.
Anyway.
I'm okay with fire budget.
We're, we're okay with fire.
I'm okay with fire, okay.
And if we're gonna have to think about more, but.
Building inspector? We're okay with him, right?
Yep.
Maintenance management, seven thousand should be okay, right?
Yep.
Anything with highway?
He went and made a, is this his final pass?
I believe so.
Right, the sand sure walked in it.
Yes, all those expenses, yeah.
He did mention that that would.
And he checked out.
That piece of land that.
Oh, yeah, clay lane.
Right.
Uh, paving and asphalt's up because of the prices are up, so.
Right.
But materials are up all over the place. So, we okay with that, or?
He's got, he's got the truck driver, he's got, overtime is almost double.
It is.
Yep. Well, the other thing he's gonna be saving on is down in the transfer station in terms of hauling.
Yep.
Right.
Hauling should go down to like almost nothing.
We need to encourage everybody to.
Well, the other thing that.
About forty, what was it, forty percent are still not refilled?
Yeah, yeah.
Did we?
Well, the thing is, go ahead.
Talk about the admin, uh, help for Steve?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we need to do that.
We need to put that in.
So, you want like, see, uh, and I think we talked about this before, um, Linda, the town clerk, I'll do positions, not names. The town clerk is planning on retiring.
Mm-hmm.
And the assistant, the deputy town clerk, excuse me, is interested in running her position. She, that particular person also fills in as a, uh, administrative accounting support for a finance officer.
That's the other side, that makes her a full-time.
Yep, so.
Full-time.
So, the thought is, she becomes the town clerk, she hires the deputy, the town hires somebody to fill in as, um, the finance officer's assistant, and also hires somebody to do Steve's assistant, making that a full-time position to attract some people.
Okay, so where do we put this?
The same person you're talking about, being an assistant for.
It could be two different people, but there's probably.
If it's two different people, then it's not a full-time position.
It's a half-time.
It's two half-times, but I'm not adverse to saying, if two people come and say, hey, I don't want full-time, I'm a part-time, but most likely it's gonna be a full-time person.
Well, then you don't give them.
Split.
Is Steve's situation stable enough that we can afford to budget this and make it a next-year thing, or is it something that?
What do you mean stable enough?
How badly does he need this help, is this something you, does the board needs to deal with?
Desperate.
Desperate today and not in the next budget year.
Right.
Yeah.
The, the thing is.
He's gonna get a little.
We're paying him an awful lot of money to do some things that are very administrative.
And he's imploding.
Yeah, like, when he spends, what, three or four hours doing the, the tickets at the transfer station, no, no, I'm paying you way more money than, you know.
So, where are we putting?
And not just that, it's also very frustrating and time-consuming for him, that he should be doing those other things, so that's why.
That's why I was saying, do you, do you?
I think he's way overloaded right now, and I think he's like stressed out.
Right.
So, in terms of this particular group purview, we're talking about fiscal twenty-three.
Yes.
You can also, when you're talking to the board on the, whatever it is.
Make a recommendation.
Say, maybe this is something that the board needs to consider sooner than, rather than later.
Right.
So, you can do that, but yeah.
So, that could be in our write-up that we.
Where would that question be on this?
Most likely in the highway department probably, right?
Highway department, okay.
So, so.
Cause Linda's not retiring, or town clerk is not retiring for like another couple of years, right?
Uh, she'd be done in March two thousand twenty-two.
Right.
So, she wouldn't outrun this election?
That is what we're being told.
Originally, it was three years and seven hours.
So, most likely, let's, if we play this out, she's done in March, this, excuse me.
Yeah.
Somebody takes over, somebody takes over in March, um, and then at that point, that particular person is no longer gonna be doing accounting help, so we have to find somebody to replace, so most likely, we'd have to do it sooner than later.
Right.
So, you might have to do it in, you know, like the second quarter versus July, so.
Really needs it now.
So, but, if that's something the group wants to do, um, Tom can recommend it when he comes to us, but.
You can just see it in his.
We all make the recommendations together, and I just, you know, deliver.
Yeah.
So, are we all in agreement that in the highway department, we want a part-time, like, full-time person?
Yes.
Um.
Administrative help for Steve.
I'm just gonna put admin assistant.
He needs twenty, twenty hours a week of administrative help, that, I, I don't care how it comes about.
Yep. Yep.
I think that's where he really needs to.
I will look up what that particular person is getting now and multiply it by, uh, twenty hours for fifty-two weeks, and that's what I'll stick in here, okay?
The, the, the financial services has to change to.
Uh, what do you mean financial services?
The benefits, not benefits, but payroll taxes and stuff.
That's already in calculated, because she's already there.
Yeah, but you just add it.
Just add another half a person.
In financial service, what?
Well, we have, something more has to be added.
We have to, we have to pick up the payroll taxes and stuff in the.
For the admin person?
For the new person.
That would already be.
Would be under personal and.
The thing you have to add is in the town clerk, tax collector for the deputy, that's what you'd have to change. Cause it's already in there for that person already, we're just changing.
No, I just meant, if you pay somebody twenty grand, there are payroll taxes that end up in personnel administration.
Yes, but that's already in there for that particular person.
But they're not gonna be there for that person.
There's a, there's a net increase of a half a person here, isn't there?
Yes, but that's gonna be in, uh, oh, I see what you mean.
We have to add a little more there because of that.
Well, there's still.
It would be in the town clerk tax collectors, where the salary goes, but yes.
Well, no, if, if, at the moment, we've got one full-time position, half in the town clerk.
Yep.
Half in the, in the select ward office.
So, we're switching bodies.
We're still, we're always gonna need a half-time person in the tax collector's o, office anyway.
Yep.
So, you're, the net gain is a half a person, if you give Steve, if you give Steve a half a person.
Because you're not taking a half a person away from the, um, the financial person too.
Okay.
Right, not, you've got one person now that's split between two departments.
Yep.
If you give Steve a half a person.
Yep.
Your, your net gain for the town is a half a person. Unless you've got a, because.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, but it would be in, it would be in town clerk tax collector, and then you put in the benefits for that into financial administration. So, yes, I think we're saying the same thing, but.
No.
No, but that's okay. The, the, the net.
If we do it early.
We'll be okay.
You have to, yeah.
So, yeah.
The net gain to the town is a half a person.
In total, yes.
In total, yes.
Yes.
And the new half a person is in the, um, highway department.
Technically, yes, well, technically.
Depends on where you put, yeah, depends on where you put it.
It's a shell game.
How many is this half a person?
Okay, we know we'll have to do.
Twenty hours times the hourly rate times fifty-two weeks equals whatever it wants to be.
And then all the fiends that have to be added in the personal administration.
And let's hope that we get two part-timers, so we don't have to pay benefits.
There you go.
Yeah, there you go, then you don't have to worry about it, right? And we can get Steve's part-timer.
But I think that, you know, administrative help like that is probably not that difficult to find as a part-time person, like, you know, if I was a stay-at-home mom or something, right, you know?
They've had a hard time, like when.
It's hard to get anybody.
Like when Julie left and Denise was covering, they, we wanted to get somebody to cover for Denise, basically.
Nobody, I know.
No.
There's nobody.
In the same round and everything else.
Yeah, well, she was just looking for somebody to answer the phone and meet people at the door, it's not very high, you know.
Yeah.
Alright, so I've captured what Pat said, highway department's transfer station.
Good.
Yes.
Yeah, cause the, where's the hauling, where's hauling?
Hauling, we'd have three grand.
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah.
So, also just remember, they're gonna also start to pay back the, um, trust funds for the truck, so, that's not necessarily going away, so.
They're gonna start paying to buy a new one.
Yeah, they, we already bought it, where?
Okay.
Where's hauling, Pat?
Hauling's a lot of the solid waste disposals.
Oh, I'm in the wrong section, okay, so, solid transfer station, we're okay with transfer station, right?
Yes.
Yeah, alright, solid waste, those solid wastes, really, he can't reduce that to three thousand, because he has to pay back the trust funds.
Why did he have to?
Because that's a deal we made, he's going to save operating expenses by using capital monies over a period of five years, so he has to pay back the cost of the new truck over five years out of that particular line item.
Oh, so he's.
Cause you already bought the truck.
They're actually putting additional monies into the trust funds, I guess.
We're paying back, so, we took a percentage out of the, the highway trust fund, hi, highway, yes, highway tr, equipment trust fund and the transfer station trust fund to buy this new truck.
Yeah.
Because it's gonna save operating expenses over five years, after that, he's saving thirty thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
So, he can really reduce that to three thousand, he has to pay back the tran, uh, the trust funds.
Where's the other piece?
Over five years for how much?
Uh, thirty thousand a year, so basically, he's spending thirty.
Plus the thirty, okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Is all, so the hauling cost will actually be the same?
That'd be the same.
It'd be the same.
So, it's really, you're expending something so that you can have the savings in year six through whatever.
Can we put that in a separate line item? I mean, I think that it might be a bit misleading to call hauling costs.
So, this was a hundred and sixty thousand dollar truck?
Um.
Is it?
I don't remember the cost.
Thirty over five years, or whatever you said.
Yeah, there's a proposal, um, I think I should still have it, but.
Okay.
Your, your point is well-taken, we should have a separate one.
I think that should be, yeah, that makes sense.
Separate one.
And make sure it's right beside it.
I'll ask Joanne, but, you know.
It would be great to have it beside it.
And to put it in.
Let me, um, also get the paperwork on that, so you see what it is that was proposed and what we accepted, so you know how much is supposed to be paid back every year. I need to find it anyways to put in the number.
Okay.
Alright, other than that, you're okay with the rest of it?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Um, hundred dollars for animal control.
Wow.
Hmm, okay, all the social agencies you're good with?
Yes.
Let's just double it and, you know.
Double it? Yeah, we were like, this is all low, but, give it to them.
They're all too low.
They're all low.
Um, general administr, uh, general assistance administration, yep, um, direct welfare, all good, parks and recreation. Oyster River, they zeroed it out, what do you guys wanna do?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen.
You like fifteen, alright, the rest of them, you okay? You okay with the part-time program coordinating?
No.
No. Sorry, Larry.
You, you, everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's what we discussed the first time around.
That's what we discussed, I would like to see a little more something from him to talk about what that person would do, and if he maybe another year, find that out better. Because I do think we need some senior programs and other things, other than kids, for adults. And older adults.
Just to let you know, the board leaning to funding that particular position, just so you know.
Okay.
Leaning, we haven't voted, leaning.
So, if they were going to do the things that we were talking about, then maybe it would be something that would be beneficial, but.
But it was awfully vague what it was, and it.
Yep, and it also sounded like they had somebody in mind.
They, they definitely said a particular, it was a woman, I believe.
Yeah.
And somebody who had agreed to do certain things, but I don't know what really they wanted to do, so it was kind of.
Um, you got the answer I got from the library, so that was really a typo in terms of the full-time versus part-time?
So, they did not make that change.
No, so they have two full-time people there, and that's it, the other.
How should we handle the, the new director coming in?
I think they're gonna need more money, you're not gonna get.
Well, they've offered the position, it's been accepted, then how come they?
I haven't.
How come we don't know?
They want to tell us what the number is.
Well, I thought that their email said that they were fairly confident that that was a competitive rate.
Yeah.
Isn't that what she said?
That's what I thought.
Now, there was an email that came from Andy that made it sound like the assistant director was becoming the director, or is she just acting?
I think she's just acting.
Okay.
I don't have any information, I asked.
Saying that he thought that they found someone.
Yes, I know, and I.
And that.
Right.
He thinks it's a woman, he said, woman or man, I think it's a woman, and we, I think they. So, he's gonna have to get us the information.
Yeah.
So, about if I ask that question?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, it wouldn't make any sense for the assistant to become the full-time one, every one life, but.
And then you have to get us another one.
Were you rested, were you comfortable with everything else in their budget?
Yes.
Alright. Patriotial purposes, two hundred and fifty, you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, conservation, they're asking for more money.
Uh-huh.
Well, they went from seven thousand last year to ten thousand eight fifty.
What are they using?
They're doing more projects, um, we gave them money for the bridges, but they want to do some other particular projects with trails and stuff like that, so.
Should we give it some details?
And the, and the signage, and the.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah.
Signages, yeah.
No, I agree with that.
They're doing gangbusters, their transportation is.
They're doing a lot.
They've done a lot, yeah.
They're just ridiculous, they, they're so gung-ho.
Yeah.
They're passionate about it, so, um, long-term debt, I assume you're okay with that, and also the interest?
I think we have to pay the.
After this particular fiscal year, the bond payment for the public safety facility goes away, and the year after that, the transfer station will go away.
Are we already paying for the new middle school?
You're paying for it now.
Okay.
Yeah, well, a, a reduced amount.
No, that was last year, this.
Last year was.
This year it's bad.
This year it's, it's, you're paying football.
You're paying, okay.
Totally the whole ball.
Yeah, last year it was that, like, a little bit.
Yeah.
The taxes are gonna go down in two years. We don't have those bond payments.
Well, they'll go down by ninety thousand, which is like twenty-four cents maybe.
Not ninety thousand each. I know, right? So sad.
That would be very nice. Come on, I don't know.
The other thing that the board's talking about specifically me is since you all make your tax bills, so you know that your evaluations went way up. It went up by fifty-four percent on average. One of the things that's hit our um elderly populations because their house values have gone up.
Right, did you guys talk about that?
Uh, I did. I kind of need one other person to support me, but that's something the legislative body has to hold on.
Mm-hmm.
So, um-
What would it look like in your line?
Uh, I don't know in terms of the numbers, but I think that the income levels and the um, um-
Assets, right?
That's the, that's the income levels. But the property tax exemption needs to have increased. I'm not so certain.
Can we do, is that a town decision or is that somebody in the state?
I thought it was a town.
No, it's a town decision.
It's a town, or is it just how much?
Yeah, you had told me that it was the state, well, the last time we talked about it in the meeting.
I learned, I learned.
So, it's not the state, the town makes the decision.
The state says, gives you guidelines and there's like a minimum if you're gonna do it, but we're way above the minimum.
So, who makes the decision if you get a exemption? Who decides?
Uh, it's based on the criteria that the town legislative body. So, for instance, right now, there's limits based on your age category and also your income. So, there's two different things we need to do. We need to do one article for the income and then in terms of the categories. So, let's say, for instance, your house is worth three hundred thousand right now. Um, let's say you're seventy years old. You don't look it, but you're really old. Um, there's, there's income limits, so if you're underneath those checkbox, if your house is uh more than, I think it's one seventy-eight or two seventy, something like that, it's very, very particular um in terms of those particular categories. So, then all you get taxed on, assessed on, is the difference between what the exemption is and what your property is valued at. So, some of these people haven't paid taxes-
Up to two seventy or whatever it was, yeah.
So, some of these people haven't paid taxes for ten, ten years. There's one elderly lady who's on limited income. She hasn't paid taxes for ten years. And uh now she's paying, she's got almost a two thousand dollar tax bill. She doesn't know how to pay it.
Yeah.
And I think that's relatively unfair because if property assessments went up, exemption should go up at the same time. If we were on the ball and we knew what was gonna happen, which we didn't, we would have raised them last March, but we didn't know whether it was gonna raise to that.
You can't do any type of emergency voting on that and say, this is what we're gonna-
We can do hardship. So, for instance, if this particular person comes to us and say, hey, you just raised my assessment this much. I'm on this limited income. They have to provide proof. They can't just come and say, oh, I only, they have to provide proof. The board can give them a hardship exemption. That is possible. So, if this lady comes in and says, hey, there's no way I can pay this, blah, 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 whatever, she provides proof. We can say, we can waive that particular thing.
Grant her the hardship for this year. And then you can increase it for next-
If it passes.
So, the only other thing that is, that you didn't talk about that is on that criteria is it also, it doesn't just list income. It also lists assets.
And your house is now?
Not, not the house. Not the house assets. Regular assets. Like, if you have a retirement account that has over two hundred and something thousand dollars in it, then the town says you don't qualify.
Because you have too many assets.
Because you have over, and it's, it literally is like two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars or something like that.
That's on the sheet they have to fill out.
Right.
So, we've, we've denied some of them because people said that and, you know.
Cause they have too much assets.
But the, the town gets control of what that particular limit is, so.
Does it take into consideration uh the length of time that you've been at the residence?
Hmm, I don't think so. I don't remember that being a criteria.
I'm just wondering because like if somebody's been in their house for fifty years and all of a sudden it's worth like five times the value, then, I don't know. Personally, I have more, you know, sympathy for that person than I do with the person who moved here two years ago and then found themselves in a hardship.
So, this is the thing. My situation is, it's uh my son-in-law's grandmother who moved to town and moved to, you know, down on Riverside Farm Drive to be close to family and everything else. So, she's eighty-one years old, but the town also says that you have to, you can't just start right in. You have to have lived at the property for three years. So, we were figuring out-
How long?
Okay, how long before she can, might not have to pay taxes? So, then we got the information. And it does, it lists income, which is, she qualifies, she hasn't, she's on, you know, retirement. Um, uh, and assets. And then the other thing was the price of the, of the house, the property. So, the price of the property went-
Way up, way up.
Um, the only thing that she doesn't meet right now is because she's right at that threshold for assets of like two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is all she has, you know? So, is that something the town will look at too and?
I don't know. I never had that one come up. Can't tell you.
But does it, would it take someone, you know, questioning it and just applying for it and seeing if, how do you go about doing that?
Yep, yep, she would have to do that. She'd have to apply for it if she's close. Let's say it's two hundred and twenty and she has two hundred and twenty-one, something like that. That's something that is gonna come before the town administrator and the assessor, and they're gonna check all those numbers. And they're gonna say, no, we're gonna deny her because she's a thousand dollars over.
Okay.
At that point, she can claim a hardship exemption and submit that to the board and we can consider it. She has to go through that process and be denied before. She can't just come and say, you know, just give me hardship or request hardship. She has to go through the process.
Okay.
Cause we need the information.
Right.
So, just like-
Because her tax just went up to, you know, ten thousand dollars. You know, this lady's like, you know, eighty-one years old.
It's gonna be hard changing those limits because everybody's wanna, wanna know how many people that's gonna-
Right, and then that could be a significant amount of money.
It's not that, well, in terms of money.
Well, how many eighty-one-year-olds are owning houses?
Um, I don't have the numbers off top. Andy provided the numbers. It's not that many people.
It's not that many, okay. Yeah, it's kind of unusual that they still do, but-